All right. Calling to order the City Council meeting, Lewisville City Council, July 22, 2025. If you could get a roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman. Councilmember Hefner. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Okay. If you could rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business tonight is an executive session on pending litigation. And I'll turn to the deputy city attorney for further comment.
As noted on the meeting agenda, the city attorney is requesting an executive session for the purpose of consultation with attorneys representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 52D of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS, Section 2464024B. Prior to entertaining any motion, the interim city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public. While in an executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session in return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. One, where federal or state law requires that information being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 52D of the charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024B with the Colorado revised statutes. The request involves two matters of pending litigation, a potential lawsuit to seek a judicial determination regarding a matter to come before the city council and the city's lawsuit filed regarding the Marshall fire. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and that the executive session also include city manager Diana Langley, deputy city manager Samantha Fox, community development director Rob Zaccaro, deputy city attorney Melinda Cully, attorney Mark Gruskin for the first executive session topic, and attorney Jason Julius and his staff for the second executive session topic. If you could get a roll call, please.
Second, actually.
Ah, thanks. Good.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner. Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Yes.
Okay. Seeing that we have a two-thirds supermajority, we will now adjourn to executive session downstairs. Thank you. For those watching, we will have a notation up, I guess, on the screen. This may take an hour. It may take a little bit longer depending on the executive session discussion. Thanks so much.
Okay, we are back from what is obviously, or was obviously, very, very long executive And I'll leave it to our deputy city attorney to give her report on that executive session.
Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of consultation with attorneys representing the city with respect to pending litigation regarding two matters, a potential lawsuit to seek a judicial determination regarding a matter to become, to come before the city council, and the marshal fire litigation.
Thank you very much. Any, and no decision was made.
No decision is required or asked of us tonight.
Very good. All right. Our first item is approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Next item on the agenda is public comments and items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. If you have a public comment, you can make it. You have three minutes to do so. Come to the podium and after having provided a card to the clerk, she'll call your name, come to the podium, make sure you tell us what your name is and whether you're Lewisville resident, and you have three minutes. And six if you can identify somebody who you can pool time with. So do we have any public comment? Okay. Sing nine, consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Council informational comments and committee reports. Do council members have reports on meetings or committees that they serve on? Yes?
I'll be brief. I attended a Dr. Cog meeting last week and it was nice to just get an update about Fast Tracks. The Flatiron Flyer, which is the public service that, or the public transit along 36 through here to Boulder, they will be increasing services. They're looking to add more times and everything, so they are working on Fast Tracks. And even RTD, in their Fast Tracks update to Dr. Cog, noted the North Rail, the passenger rail. So the fact that it's part of the conversation, that is part of the budget, they are very concerned about upcoming and future tax initiatives, and they wanted all of us to understand that this is something that they hear, and so this is on their agenda. Thank you.
I've attended a recent meeting on Northwest mayors and county commissioners. Also, the big topic was rail. We're waiting for a lot of issues to kind of shake out, having more information to be able to share with the public about how that's going to develop. There won't be any ballot measure this fall. In all likelihood, there may be one in the fall of 2026. More information to come on that. Also, there's an Economic Vitality Committee meeting on Thursday at 3:00. If anybody's interested in that, you're welcome to attend. All right. City manager's report.
Thank you. We have a budget retreat tomorrow at noon here in the council chambers. Thursday evening, we have a Ward Two meeting at 6:00 PM at the Recreation Center. And then on Saturday, we do have a council booth at the farmer's market from 9:00 AM to noon. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of regular business, bear with me for just a second, is ordinance number 1898, series 2055, and ordinance approving grant of a cable franchise to Comcast of California/Colorado/Florida/Oregon Inc., and approving a cable franchise agreement between Comcast of California/Colorado/Florida/Oregon Inc. and the city of Louisville, Colorado, second reading. This is the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for any disclosures among council members. Okay. We'll have the staff presentation, please.
Thank you, mayor. We have Attorney Wilson Scarborough of Wilson, Williams, Feldman, and Ditman here to present on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Samma said, my name is Wilson Scarborough. I work with the firm Wilson, Williams, Feldman, Ditman. Also here tonight is Andy Davis from Comcast, who can be available to answer any questions on the company side of things. Since you all had a long exec session, I'll try to kind of limit my presentation. I didn't come with a slide deck or anything like that, but I did have a chance to talk with Samma, and she kind of gave me a heads up on what some of the questions or some of the kind of outstanding concerns with this franchise were. The two things I had heard about was kind of understanding how this is different from the internet side of Comcast business, and then also questions about the term of this franchise agreement. So to give the sort of very brief 30,000-foot overview, under federal law, in order to provide cable TV service in an area, companies like Comcast have to obtain a cable franchise from the local franchising authority. That document is meant to address the cable-related needs of the community, which is a term used in the Cable Act. Importantly, it allows the city to collect a 5% franchise fee, 5% of Comcast's gross revenues, from selling cable service in the city as a sort of rent for Comcast's use of the right-of-way. It also requires them to comply with any generally applicable regulations that the city has regarding the use of the right-of-way. For internet service, it's a little bit different. At the federal level, internet is largely deregulated. And also, at the state level, there is state legislation that gives internet companies the right to locate their facilities within public rights-of-way without being charged a franchise fee. So that means for a company like Comcast, the city can only impose franchise fees on Comcast's cable business. They cannot impose, you can't impose franchise fees on Comcast's internet business, nor can you impose franchise fees on internet, on internet services offered by competitive internet providers. This new franchise agreement has been updated to track the changes in federal law that have happened since the city's prior franchise in 2014 or 2015. I'll just highlight two of those. So one thing that changed that's maybe not so great for the city is there was an FCC regulation called the 621 Order, which states that many of the, some of the in-kind services that Comcast has traditionally provided, such as free service to public buildings, can be deducted from franchise fees. And it also limits what kind of in-kind services the city can require from Comcast. But one good change under this franchise, or at least we think it's a good change for the city, is, as you may know, people have been cutting the cord, canceling their cable packages, franchise revenues that the city receives are going down as Comcast makes less money from cable service every year. Under the existing franchise, the city gets, are they 50 cents, Andy? So Comcast charges to each of their subscribers, and then it is passed through to the city, 50 cents per subscriber per month, which is used to fund the city's PEG, public educational and government programming that is provided on Comcast's cable network. What we have done for other communities across the front range in recent franchise renewals is because Comcast has been losing subscribers kind of month over month, year over year, but their revenues have been going down slower, they're still decreasing, but the slope of the line is considerably more shallow, is the, under the new franchise, the franchise, or the PEG contribution that Comcast will pay is now calculated on a percentage of Comcast's gross revenues. The idea being that while you will probably still see the PEG support fees gradually decrease over the next 10 years of the franchise, it will hopefully be a slower decrease than it has been, especially over the last five years. The, as, with regard to the term, I know there was some questions to why is this a 10-year agreement? Does it make any sense to do a shorter agreement? These agreements have traditionally been 10 years, and so we're renewing for another 10 years. When I first started working with Ken's firm and kind of on this round of franchise renewals, Ken kept saying that, he was telling all his clients last time, you know, in 2014, 2015, that that was going to be the last cable franchise that they ever negotiated. And here we are again. I'm not sure, I don't want to tell you that actually it's this time it's going to be your last cable franchise. We may well be back here in 10 years with yet another cable franchise, but we really don't know what the cable market is going to look like in 10 years. But I can say, if, at any time during the next 10 years, you know, Comcast were to basically close up their cable television business and move to a internet and internet streaming only model, this agreement and applicable law would still ensure that the city can enforce, you know, generally applicable right-of-way regulations. Comcast will still have to pull permits, you know, comply with any applicable city codes regarding burial of their facilities, work within the rights-of-way, things like that. So it might be, maybe in the next round of franchise renewals, we'll look at doing shorter agreements. That's something that's been floated, but for the moment, we're still doing the 10-year agreements. I talked for quite a while there, so I'll pause now if there are any questions on anything I said or anything I didn't address.
Council members, any questions? Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, I just have one small question. So the, you mentioned before the 50 cents per customer charge, and so the new agreement has this 0.48. Is that because of this switch to the gross?
Correct. So that, that was calculated, basically, we looked at the last five years of what the city was collecting in, in PEG fees based on that 50 cents per subscriber per month, and then what you were collecting in franchise fees, and then essentially took the average or kind of the high watermark to calculate that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Does the applicant have any presentation?
Hi, everyone. Andy Davis, Director of Government Affairs for Comcast. No, just mostly just to say thank you, and we just worked really well with Wilson to work through the agreement. And the, the city is part of the Colorado Communications and Utilities Alliance, so the core agreement that we're working from is, is an agreement that we are using across the metro area and CCU membership, with CCU members. So really a collaborative process to get to where we were, so, where we are. So that's largely it, but was happy to answer any questions that you might have for, for me around services here in the community, but also I know it's already been a long night for all of you, so, you know, also just happy to let you proceed as you need to.
Council questions? Nope, I think we're, we're good.
Great. Thank you.
Because this is an ordinance, we're going to have two rounds of public comment. First round, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Anybody online? Doesn't appear. Okay. Council members want to make any comments? Yes. Councilmember Cooperman.
Just had one question probably for staff. So as the revenues we get from this decrease, I mean, does it come a point where we can no longer support the things that we pay with, we use those funds to pay, or, I don't know?
Thank you, councillor. That's a great question. So there are two places the revenues for this go. The general revenues for the franchise fee go into the general fund, and in our forecast for general fund, we are assuming those are going to be decreasing, so we're taking that into account. Then we also get PEG fees, which we use for things like update to this room. Those are decreasing, so that'll, will limit our ability to make system upgrades and things like that as we continue without dipping into other general fund resources.
Okay. Just good to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We'll take a second round of public comment. Any additional folks? Doesn't look like anybody online has got their hands raised. All right. Any further comment from council?
I'm making a motion.
You bet.
I'm, I'd move that we pass ordinance number 1898, series 2025, an ordinance approving the grant of a cable franchise to Comcast of California, Colorado, Florida, Oregon Incorporated, and approving a cable franchise agreement between Comcast of California, Colorado, Florida, Oregon Incorporated, and the city of Louisville, Colorado.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just say that for the reasons set forth in the staff presentation and our presentation from council tonight, support the passage of this ordinance. So shall we take a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Okay, passes, and let's go on to the next one. And I know that people have been waiting both online and, and in our council chambers, and I appreciate that, we appreciate that. Hopefully, people understood the caption that appears on the channel, and we try to get back as soon as we can, but we appreciate the attending or your patience. So this is a concept plan review for 1155 Pine Street. We'll just go for staff presentation.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Member City Council, Rob Zuccaro with Community Development Department, I'll be presenting on this item. So we are going to dig a little bit into the history because it takes a bit to understand kind of the policy around this property. So the staff report was probably a little more in-depth than you would typically for, typically for, see for a concept plan review. So again, it'll take a little bit more time. But again, just to remind everybody, concept plan review, this is a non-binding kind of sketch plan process where a property owner, developer can come and get some preliminary feedback from city council. There's no consensus, majority votes or straw polls, any comments provided by council or advisory. Staff hasn't done a deep dive or made any recommendations, and boards and commissions haven't reviewed it either. So to kind of get into this property here, you know, this is the property that's situated at the northwest corner of Pine and 96th Street, so it is part of the gateway, and it's one of the gateways into downtown as you're coming down to Main Street and the commercial core of downtown. So a little bit of the history here, so what's, I think, important to understand is this is part of the Highway 42 revitalization area. So starting back really a couple of decades, the city spent a lot of time envisioning and planning how to redevelop this area on the east side of the railroad tracks. A lot of that was in relation to Northwest Rail coming, and it led to a whole series of plan adoptions, comprehensive plan policies, and really what, what it came to was this mixed-use overlay that really covers from Pine Street all the way up to South Boulder Road, between the railroad tracks and Highway 42. And, you know, this was all set in place to support transit-oriented development around the railroad station. We all know the history of that. You know, the, around 2015, we were actually supposed to get rail. Of course, it has gone away. You all mentioned in your reports that there's certain momentum that is happening, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that as well because it, it might influence the feedback you give or your thoughts about the policy. But the mixed-use overlay and the revitalization area and the comprehensive plan amendments around that, again, were all to create kind of a higher-density, mixed-use type development that would support transit. And here's, here's the overlay map. And most of the development that has occurred around the future station is what we call D-Lo, downtown East Lewisville, so you see the commercial that's gone in, the three-story apartments, you know, the pedestrian infrastructure that's gone in around there. And there was, you know, a purposeful intent to plan that around here. There was also an intent to maintain the, a couple of the historic neighborhoods, so notably Little Italy up here, as well as the Miners Fields neighborhoods, which are in yellow. But all of the red and the orange are intended to, you know, create that mixed-use overlay, the higher-density pedestrian-oriented development. So the property that we're talking about is way down here, and you can see that, you know, our station area is planned up here. It's a little bit disconnected, but it is part of the gateway into downtown, and there's some intended synergy with the rail station, as well as integrating with the higher-density development on Front Street and going into Main Street. But what's there today is single-family, you know, development that's from the early 1900s, including this property. But again, the, the intent of the policies was to have that higher-density residential development, so it's slated for mixed-use residential, which under the overlay would be three-story, you know, multifamily is what the design guidelines call for with ground-floor retail along that side is what would be desired by that policy. So what the applicant is proposing is, it's a different vision, a different concept. There is an existing house here, here, in this location. Their proposal is to retain that house, go through historic preservation process, potentially get grant money and so forth. They also want to relocate a house that was existing in Lewisville and was slated for demolition. They've also brought in a couple, they brought in a couple of train cars. One is the Lewisville caboose, and that was part of a restaurant that you're probably familiar with, that was up on South Boulder Road. The caboose was part of a series of, I think, maybe five or seven or eight train cars at one point that were part of a restaurant. So this, this train car was brought in in 1972 to be part of all of these train car restaurants, that closed in 2000. So they're proposing, so part of what they're proposing, and really what's before you in addition to these development plans, is also, they're asking, they're going to, their intent is to ask for removal from that mixed-use overlay. So instead of, you know, having to rezone to that mixed-use residential under this overlay, on the overlay requirements, they would retain the, the commercial zoning that would be applicable to that property. That commercial zoning allows what we call live-work. So again, I think live-work is typically, you think of maybe a commercial entity on the bottom floor, and there's, you know, you're living on the top floor, but it's all one unit, but it doesn't have to be that way, it's not dictated that way in the code. All it says is the live-work, you know, that the, the work portion has to be street-facing, so they're actually proposing to connect the two structures with an underground corridor so that you can have kind of the live in the back and the work in the front, so there'd be kind of a, it is considered a commercial use even though there's a residential use. So that is allowed in both the mixed-use residential, as well as the zoning that they're wanting to retain by removal of that, removing themselves from that mixed-use overlay.
Did you say it's allowed in both?
It is, it is actually allowed in both, but it comes down to the, what's the intended design, but the, the use of mixing live-work, so residential with work in a single unit, is allowed in both zone districts. So I think that's part of what, what they're hoping for, again, is removal from that mixed-use overlay that would require them to rezone and instead retain the CC zoning. So that would mean, you know, if that were to be approved, staff wanted to point out that would actually revert them back into the design handbook for downtown Lewisville. So that's what governs development within the commercial core of downtown and what we call the transition areas. So this dotted line is the boundary of, you know, what we consider the downtown area and is subject to those design standards. The pink area is the transition area, that's where you abut residential development. It's lower intensity, it's intended to be, you know, a lower slung, you know, lower buildings, less dense development, less intense development as you transition to the residential areas. So even before we had the mixed-use overlay, this group of homes between the railroad tracks and Pine Street, on the north side of Pine Street, were intended to be part of the commercial core. Even the design handbook calls for higher-density commercial development rather than the residential that's there now. So, you know, but again, it would, either of these zones, this zone district would probably support their proposal more than the mixed-use zone districts, thus they want to try to change the zoning overlay. Within this row of houses, again, that mandatory rezoning requirement, so if you're not familiar with it, it's not already zoned mixed-use residential, it says that you can maintain your use and your zoning until you redevelop, and then you are required to rezone. The property three parcels down was actually part of a redevelopment, and they have rezoned, so there is one property along that street that has rezoned to the mixed-use residential already to start implement that, I'm sorry, to start implementing that. So, you know, I think there's some consideration that staff wants to bring up. Typically, you don't, what, what would be called a spot zoning, so pick one property and rezone it with a different policy than the rest of the properties. So again, there's some intention that this whole string of properties would be zoned mixed-use residential ultimately to support all of those policies. So staff did bring this up, that if there is consideration of rezoning this, or removing it from the mixed-use overlay and retaining the CC zoning, that, that would, you know, look and fill and function like a spot zone, and that there's probably some intention to have some continuous land use policy for this whole string of properties, the six properties north of Pine Street. So I think it's important that, you know, if city council wants to consider those changes, you might want to consider changes for the whole string of properties. So the applicant is also wanting to pursue a landmark designation for, I'm not sure of the full extent, but that would come before you as well as Historic Preservation Commission. We do want to note that, you know, certainly if you landmark a property, that's in perpetuity, it runs with the land, it's, you know, zoning you can change over time. Council has pretty broad discretion on that. I think removing a landmark restriction is, it's not impossible, there's a process for it, but it's more problematic, I would say, so it, it's more of a permanent change to the policy along that strip of land. So that could limit redevelopment potential, you know, consistent with that mixed-use So to, the thing that we hear a lot is about the rail, and that the rail's not going to come, it's never going to come. I can't say it's ever going to come, but there's been a lot of momentum in the last couple of years, which we want council to be aware of, and I think you're aware of it, but I want to go into the detail just so you're aware of the full scope. RTD and Front Range Passenger Rail District is a, is a CDOT, you know, an arm of CDOT. They're their own district now, but they're in partnership with CDOT. They are trying to do starter service or peak service with a targeted start date of 2029, so there's a whole series of plans in the work, in the works where Lewisville could have a station as part of that 2029 service. We actually participated in a study last year with RTD to look at how, you know, what's a roadmap to initiate peak service? So peak service is instead of having your full Northwest Rail service, where you've got dozens of trains each day, there's three trains going to Denver in the morning, three trains coming back in the evening, but you put in the station infrastructure. And so there was a study, and I'll get into a little more detail on that, but some of the synergy is Front Range Passenger Rail, so that's its own entity, they're looking at more regional rail service. So RTD and Front Range Rail could work together to jointly fund some of the infrastructure and help support each other's goals. So that's acknowledged in this '24 study. In fact, some of the station area planning, you know, looks at how to implement the types of service that they would want to bring forward. In 2024, there were two important tax measures, Senate Bill 184 and 230, that provided additional tax funding specifically for rail implementation and specifically for Northwest Rail implementation. So there is new, there is new tax revenue to try to get to that 2029 goal. And in fact, in March of 2025 of this year, there was a report that was required by the Senate Bill 24184, put together by RTD, CDOT, and the Front Range Passenger Rail District to put, to do an analysis of could this be funded with existing, there's a big existing grant from the federal government, as well as the new state funding, RTD funding, and so their conclusion in that report was it's possible to do this by 2029 without going after additional federal funding. And so that kind of led to this June 2025 report, our agreement, June 2025 agreement between all of these entities, which are spelled out in your staff report, where they're going to begin negotiations with Burlington Northern Santa Fe to see if they can come to an agreement. So that's one of the big stumbling blocks is can there be an actual agreement on a reasonable price to share that track with BNSF? So I only bring this all up because, you know, it's relevant to what the city wants to do with those land use policies. And so from the 2024 RTD study, this is some of the station area planning that we did. So this is the South Street underpass, the railroad tracks, this is Front Street. So I think most of you know that for the last two decades, basically, the city has been planning a rail station in this vicinity, specifically on the northeast corner of the intersection of the underpass. In fact, the city and the urban renewal district spent a lot of money putting in a double abutment underpass there to support the train. I would say when D-Lo did their first phase of development, there was a lot of, you know, thought that the rail wasn't going to come, so I would say there are some restrictions on this site for a potential rail station. I think in the 2024 study, working with RTD, they did a preliminary engineering design. Now, one of the problems is this is all private property, so we would have to work with the private property owner that owns the apartments, we've been in discussions with them. But, you know, there are some restrictions on this location that, I'm not saying we would ever rethink the station location, but if that 29-date becomes real, we probably need to just step back a little bit and reaffirm that this location is good versus some potential other locations, which could include Pine Street. And I can explain why a little bit, but I think that's important to know as well. And part of it is that BNSF wants to have a double track at this location. We have a double abutment, but what that means is for our station, we'd have to have a third track. So it's, there's a potential we'd actually have to put in a, a new abutment at this location, which could be a pretty big expense. And there's some, you know, there's some other just restrictions with the way that D-Lo development went in. So the other, just the last thing on the rail is that one of the requirements with this type of passenger rail is that, you know, with light rail, you can actually walk across the tracks at the stations because of the rail type. With this type of commuter rail, which would be electric or diesel, is what it typically is now, and the types of tracks, is you can't cross the tracks at the station. So you have to have an underpass or a surface crossing. So if this site doesn't work out, there's a potential that we would want to dig deeper into the intersection of Pine Street because that's the one location near downtown where we have a surface crossing. And I only bring it up because if we're going to make land use policy changes, I just want council to be fully informed of, you know, what's happening with the rail, and there could be influences around that. So just as a summary of policy considerations that we think you should consider in this concept plan review, certainly preservation of the homes along this section of Pine Street, they're all old historic homes, and that could be seen as supporting historic neighborhood character and building forms, even though that's not consistent with, you know, the Highway 42 revitalization policy. It doesn't mean that the city council can't change that policy in support of historic preservation. Rezoning itself doesn't guarantee that this development would take place or any other development. Once it's rezoned, that runs with the land. A PUD or anything else expires after three years if it doesn't get built, but we'd be stuck with the zoning unless the city council wanted to rezone it back. I mentioned the alternative station locations. Again, I don't want to speculate or propose a Pine Street location, but it is something we may end up talking about in the next couple of years if the momentum with rail continues to move forward. Again, removal of the, removal of this property out of the mixed-use overlay could limit the city's ability to implement that initial vision for Highway 42. And if it were to be landmarked, which is the ultimate intent, then that would, you know, further limit flexibility for redevelopment. know, further limit flexibility for redevelopment of that strip of land. So those are just things to think about. I think, again, the historic character of that strip is certainly similar to the residential areas of downtown versus all of these other policies from the last couple of decades. So again, sorry for the extra long presentation, but I think the history of the evolution of our policy around the rail station, I just wanted to make sure you are all fully aware of it to the extent I could talk about it in these few minutes.
I appreciate that, and I understand the reason for it. I think council does as well. So any questions for the director? Yes, council member.
So, actually, thank you for the history, so everybody paying attention can understand it. It's much appreciated. So you were mentioning that if they, if we were to approve them staying with the commercial, the CC zoning instead of going with the mixed use, did I hear you correctly, there is already one property a few houses up that is already zoned as mixed use?
It's already zoned as mixed use residential. It did not redevelop, but it did fall under the mandatory rezoning because it was part of another property that was redeveloping.
Okay, so I was just gonna say, I'm like, I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, it's still a single family home, so it, but it did rezone, but they're able to maintain that as a non-conforming use.
So, and you were also mentioning that this, the plans that they're kind of proposing right now, the idea, that would fall, that would work either under the mixed use zoning or the CC, what would be the advantage?
So the use is allowed. So live work is an allowed use as it's defined in either zone district. The mixed, yes, so the mixed use design standards for the mixed use residential, it basically dictates three-story apartment buildings. That's what it's asking for. They're wanting to do, you know, a couple of singles, so it's really inconsistent with the mixed use residential zoning standards. You know, the amount of waivers that would be needed would, you know, be so inconsistent with those standards, you know, by saying, well, you're supposed to do three stories. Well, we want to waiver for one story. So theoretically, you could do it with waivers. So the CC district also allows live work, but there's less restrictive design standards. There's still design standards, but they're less restrictive. They would be more apt to support single-story development.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, council member.
I have a kind of a similar question. So this would only be the first house on the far east end of that strip? And the other houses would still maintain the mixed use zoning?
Yeah, they would remain within the mixed use overlay, and when they redeveloped, they would have to rezone to mixed use residential. This would be excluded from that mandatory rezoning requirement.
Okay, so, but right now, this would maintain its own location and have a historic house in the historic location, and they would just be adding one behind that?
That's the proposal, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, council member.
Yeah, so the property has this sort of triangular shape. And I'm just curious, you know, do you see that posing any problems for development as an MU-R parcel?
Right, so, yeah, it is an oddly shaped parcel due to old railroad spurs and those types of things. So I think the most likely scenario is that somebody would maybe consolidate some of these parcels for development. That certainly happens from time to time. Developers will come in, consolidate parcels to do these types of developments. I think it would be challenging to meet the mixed use standards on a single parcel of this size. It's more likely to be a consolidation.
Have there been any efforts that you know of by other property owners along that Pine Street area to landmark their properties?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, do we have an applicant presentation?
Have you plugged it in yet? Yeah. I'm so excited. Sorry. Okay, got my visual aids. I know if you guys are like me, and it's 8:37 PM, you're probably like at home watching Netflix or something. So for the first part of our presentation, that's basically what it's going to be. I'm going to tell the stories, tell some backstory, so you can sit back and just enjoy it, hopefully. And, da, 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 that's not it. Here we go. Okay. Awesome. Okay, cool. So I'm going to jump in, I have a few shout outs, or one shout out. Andy Johnson with DAJ, he has helped us all along with this. He can't be tonight, here tonight, he is on vacation celebrating his 25th wedding anniversary, which is fantastic. So instead, you get me, the excited guy who's just going to tell stories, and also hopefully get to some of the meat and potatoes of what we're actually looking at here. So thanks for having me, I know it's late, I appreciate it. Okay, so I have right here, so I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell different pieces of the puzzle, and it's all going to come together here at the end. So bear with me, indulge me, yes.
Before you go any further, can you state your name for the?
Oh, yeah, yeah. My name is Travis Ramos, I'm the applicant. Okay, there we go. Okay, so this is a doorknob, it's a burnt doorknob, and it sits on my nightstand next to my bed, and it has for many, many years. It's actually from the front door of my step-grandparents' home in rural Oklahoma, and I pulled it from the ashes of their house after it burned down. And I, it's on my nightstand, it has been for many, many years, and I have it here tonight because it ties me to a story. It's a little thing. But, and the story, this part's a little bit personal, it's like the saddest part of the whole thing, but the story that this reminds me of, and the reason that I pulled it from the overgrown ruins of my step-grandparents' home, is because this doorknob reminds me that after 30 years in my life of hating something that happened to me as a kid, redemption was possible. And, don't need to get into that whole story, but forgiveness is possible. So this doorknob reminds me of a good thing, of redemption and forgiveness. It's a little thing, but it ties me to a bigger story. So, and that's the saddest part of the whole thing. So now, we're going to jump into the story. So the first piece is the caboose, of course, which I hope you all are familiar with, I'm going to go through that part of the story fairly quickly here. Saving this old caboose is a 1915 Rock Island caboose. It traveled the rails for 50-plus years before it ended up here in Louisville, as Rob mentioned, early 1970s. And as Rob also mentioned, it was part of the restaurant, first it was the Gandy Dancer, and then Coal Creek Junction, and a variety of other restaurants, until it went defunct in the early 2000s and started to sit. But the story of saving the caboose started with just our family. We realized it was going to get demolished, and we talked to the property owners, and they told us if we can dig it out, we can save it, but we had to do so before the demolition crew was going to show up at that time in six weeks. And so that first weekend, it was just, my two boys at the time were five and seven years old, and me just digging our shovels into the cold, you know, October dirt out there at the end. So it just started with us. And then we told some neighbors about it, and they're like, you guys are insane, what are you doing? And I'm like, I don't know, we're saving the caboose. But then the story started to grow. And before we knew it, it wasn't just us, it wasn't just us and our neighbors and our friends, news stations started to pick it up. We were on all the Denver news stations, it was in the Daily Camera, I kept having to pull my kids out of school to do like news interviews. It just became this, this thing we never really imagined because it resonated so much with our community. And this is, I mean, just kind of a fun little tidbit, Steven Tebow, the property, I don't know, mogul owner, wanted to actually buy it. I guess he had some kind of memory, in the caboose, we're in the restaurant back in the day, offered to buy it. A neighboring town, we got lots of messages from lots of people, but a neighboring town was like, hey, we could put this in our community park. And I was like, no, it belongs in Louisville, it's not for sale, it needs to stay here, it's part of our history. And so as, you know, like I mentioned, so many volunteers started to come out and help. I was, I mean, I was just amazed, I was floored at what started to unfold. And my next little visual, visual aid here, just a piece of wood. And I brought this piece of wood because as we started to have volunteers come out, there was a piece of wood like this, wasn't this one, that someone had just leaned up against a tree, kind of off out of the way, and I asked him about it, it was one of the volunteers, I think his name was David, I asked him about it, and he said, do you mind if I just keep that piece? And I was like, no, a problem at all, like it's just a little piece of wood. And maybe similar to this, it was a little thing, but he wanted to keep it because he had memories in the restaurant, he had memories in these train cars, going back, you know, 20, 30 years. It was a little thing, but to him, it was important. I imagine, I hope, it's still hanging in his garage somewhere. Whenever he looks at it, he thinks about it. And there's other stories like that, but I'll bypass those to get into some more of the good stuff. So this is one of my favorite stories. So this is Abby Schutze, and this was a photo taken in the early 1970s. And as I mentioned, we started getting a lot of messages about, you know, when we were saving the caboose. And Abby messaged us, she had seen the story on the news, and she reached out and said, hey, can I take you to coffee? And I was like, sure, sounds good. So next thing I knew, I found myself sitting across from not just Abby, but several other ladies who are around, she's around my mother's age, who are around, you know, my mother's age, and I'm just sitting down to coffee, and they just started telling me all these stories because they were the waitstaff, they worked together at Coal Creek Junction in the early 1970s, and seeing the story caused her to reconnect with her old waitstaff friends that she hadn't talked to in years and years. And so I find myself sitting across from coffee with them, just watching them swapping stories and telling about all these old memories. And she, they brought photos. So this is one of the photos, you can probably tell that's the Empire Restaurant on Main Street, but they put together this float, which was for the railroad, it was for the restaurant, it was Coal Creek Junction. And so I was just, I was amazed, I just love seeing this stuff. This is taken inside the restaurant that the caboose is part of. But the realization of what I was doing really just started to hit, that saving these pieces of our past just meant so much to our community. And so what we did, just days before the restaurant was demolished, we decided to put together this thing called One Last Dinner. And this is kind of like the Netflix show, right? But One Last Dinner, and so, you know, the restaurant at that point is kind of half torn down, it's pretty ramshackle, doesn't look very good, but we're like, what if we gathered Abby and her waitstaff friends and treated them to One Last Dinner in their old caboose before everything's torn down and before we crane the caboose out of there? And so this is one angle, this is the other, this side of the caboose is from the restaurant facing side, so you can just see through it because that wall wasn't there. But I got to give a shout out to Kami Reed, she's a personal chef, and she catered this amazing meal. The neighbors let her cook, you know, in their house, and we carted the stuff over, and it was fantastic. And it's just another shot. I've never seen people turn back into their 20-year-old selves so fast. It was, it was just amazing, just sitting there watching them. It was like, I don't know, all the hot goss, all the stuff was just like, it was back, just like back in the day. So I showed you this photo, and these aren't all the same people, some of them are, and then there's this photo, almost 50 years later. So I got to blow the whistle just for them. They gave me this whistle as a thanks, thanks for saving our caboose. It's a little thing, but to me, it's also on my nightstand. It reminds me of a story and ties me to our community and to everybody who helped save the caboose. And then this, of course, one of my favorite photos of all time, my family and I are in the bottom right there, but so many people came out. And that was just days after One Last Dinner, when everything was gone. All right, next up, puzzle pieces. So now there's this historic caboose, what do you do with a historic caboose? When a pandemic hits, you do nothing because there's a pandemic, you just let it sit on a farm that someone lets you put it there until you can figure out what to do with it. But this is where 1155 Pine comes in. So we started to look into that spot right there, which Rob already showed you guys, at 1155, and this is a map, I think it's called Drums Map from the early 1900s. And if you look at this map, so there's the railway right there, you know, going vertically through Louisville, I'm pointing at this one, I don't know, online, but there's railroad tracks on there. And if you look at where the white arrow is, there's 1155 Pine, it says Colorado and Southern Railway. That spur served the Rex Mine Number Two, the Rex Mine Number One, went on out to Lafayette. And then the other side goes past a grain elevator, hits the main branch, goes past a grain elevator, and over to the Acme Mine. Actually, I got to interject this. So the house, I don't know, the third one from the right where the arrow is, Sam Kilerman lives there, he has lived there his entire life, the man is in his mid to late 80s, if I had to make a guess. He came over the other day to talk to me, and he was telling me, oh, I wish I could point, I don't know, he was telling me, so directly right across Pine Street, when he was like 10 years old, him and his buddy would walk across the street, and they would walk up this ramp that was built there above the train tracks, and when coal cars would pull up and sit there, him and his buddy would jump into the coal cars and end up up to their waist in just like coal slag. I just, I love, I love imagining that, it's just, it's amazing. Anyway, so the property, we thought, what better thing could we do with the Louisville caboose than potentially buy that property, rebuild a short section of this Colorado and Southern Railway, this historic railway, and put it right there at the East Gateway to downtown for everyone to see, honoring our past and our history and all that sort of thing. So we ransomed everything we had to buy the property, and this was the before. This is Jean Morgan, I got to give an amazing shout out to her, she's the best, she has been such a huge supporter of this whole thing. She donated mining cart, her mining cart that had been in her yard for years. When I told her we were doing this, she broke down in tears and was pretty happy. And anyway, so that's before, it was right after we bought it, and it was time to get to work now. All right, so we're talking about the different pieces, we own the property, now what do we do? The next piece, okay, we're rebuilding a section of the Colorado and Southern Railway. How amazing would it be if we could find an actual Colorado and Southern rail car to put on the Colorado and Southern Railway, ideally one that would have been in Louisville over a century ago? And so every night, oh man, I was, I was just like a hound on the historic archives, the Louisville Historic Archives, looking for photos of boxcars, it was a problem. But I found this one. So this is from the Acme Mine, early 1900s, I'm going to zoom in. If you look real close, you can see it says C and S right there on it. So I'm like, okay, that was in Louisville, that's pretty rad. And then another one, this is at the Rex Mine, I forget if it's number one or number two, another CNS boxcar right there. And so I started to make, make phone calls everywhere I could, trying to find a Colorado and Southern boxcar. I mean, everywhere, railroad museums, you name it, I called, and they were like, yeah, Colorado and Southern stuff's really hard to find, it's really rare, and the only stuff we know of is, is either already in our museum, if, you know, there's a couple museums, and they didn't want to give it up, of course, or it's just gone. And so that was the problem, those century-old CNS cars don't really exist anymore unless they're in museums. And so, this is wild, I entertain myself, sorry. Not to be dismayed, I started looking, so this is like every night for like a week and a half, after our kids are in bed, I'm just on Google Maps, combing property after property outside of Louisville, looking for something boxcar-shaped, because I'm like, maybe one ended up on a farm outside of Louisville. Stranger things have happened. Like a week in, I see this. Okay, I'm going to zoom up here. So if you look right in the middle there, that thing's boxcar-shaped. And so I look up the property owner, I stop by, it takes me three or four times to finally catch up with him. And it's not super uncommon for, you know, there'd be train, like a old rail car sitting on a farm, whatever. It is super, super uncommon to find a It is super, super uncommon to find a Colorado and Southern rail car, outside of Lewisville no less. And so talked to the property owners. Sure enough, this is boxcar number 8064, made in 1898 by the St. Charles Car Company. It is one of two remaining such cars. The other one is fully restored in a museum in South Park. And this is, this is the other one. This is it. And so I talked to the owners. I told them about the vision that we had for the East Gateway to Lewisville, what we're hoping to do, rebuilding this short section of the Colorado and Southern track. And they said, this is awesome. It's yours. They donated it to the whole thing. And so there it is. That's, that's when we, we put it there. December 2024. Nope, three. There we go. And the craziest thing, and why I like to call it the Steinbach car now, is because when we started to do some work on the boxcar to get the permit, we had to do some structural stuff to fix it up. I was peeling off some of the tin work from the inside and on the backside of one of the pieces of tin work, it said, I mean, I, this is crazy. It says J.J. Steinbach, Lewisville, Colorado. This is like inside the wall of the boxcar. And if you don't know J.J. Steinbach, I'll tell you more about him in a second. I got some things with his names on him. But he's, you know, everybody knows about J.J. Steinbach. So it's just like, it was meant to be there. This is amazing. To go from like, oh, I would like to find something like that, to like, oh, I found one of two known remaining ones. I don't want to say miraculous, but it was pretty crazy. All right, so that's the Steinbach car. We talked about the Lewisville caboose. The next piece is the miner's mansion. We call it the mansion, which Rob touched on also in his presentation. And it's the small little house that's there on 1155 Pine. It's this tiny, tiny house. And it's built, you know, 15 feet off of the railroad spur that Sam used to jump into with his buddy, of the rail cars that Sam used to jump into. And it was actually built using parts of what must have been a late 1800s boxcar. You go in the cellar and there's like hardware, there's these big giant beams and there's train car hardware sticking out of the sides of them. It's just kind of cool. So for the majority of its life, based on the history, it was used and lived in by miners. That's why we call it the miner's mansion or the mansion for short. This is an arrow view of Lewisville, 1930s-ish, and if you zoom way in, there's the mansion, right there. And you can kind of tell, there's a railroad track that goes one way and then there's the other part of the Y there. But that house has been there for a long time. And oh, this is cool. Okay. One quick thing, I found a photo and I couldn't, I couldn't refine it for this presentation. It looks along Pine. And in the back of the photo, you can see the smoke stacks from the Rex Mine Number Two. And the Rex Mine Number Two, there's smoke coming out of the stacks. It shut down in 1917. And so, and this house was in that photo. So the house had to be built before 1917. Before we thought it was like 1920s, but it's like some fun historic, history forensics. But that house, that little house has been there for a long, long time. When I posted a few days ago on social media, this is kind of awesome. Someone sent me this picture, and this is the mansion. This is the front of the mansion. This is one of the only other photos we have now. But Kyle and Becca Ferguson, here in town, reached out and that little girl is Becca's grandmother. And the mansion was her great-great-grandparents' house, Emile and Apolloni De Sali. And one of the cool things is if you, when you go into the cellar, scrawled in the concrete right there, it says October 14th, 1955, Lorraine De Sali. And I sent a, I sent a video of that to Becca and she said it brought her tears because her grandmother's passed away. But that's Lorraine right there. When she was 13, she scrawled her name into the concrete there, going down into the cellar. And so, yeah, and then this is Emile and Apolloni. Again, Becca Ferguson sent us these, they're the De Salis. And if we get to the point where we can landmark the house, it'd be cool to make it the De Sali House. And this is cool. So this is my, when we, in the bedroom, we peeled up some of the old floor to get down to the original floor. And lo and behold, there were just a bunch of newspapers from May and June of 1951. They were just pressed between the floorboards, pressed between layers of the floor. And check it out, we got J.J. Steinbach coming back. And again here, I mean, I have a stack of newspapers this tall from what was under there. But this one's also cool. Sadly, it was where the vent is for the heater. But, you know, the De Salis were miners. It's the United Mine Workers Journal, which is kind of cool. So we're framing some of this stuff, putting it up in the house, but I just kind of love it. And again, it's, it's little things like that, but those little things tie us to these bigger stories. All right, so next piece of the puzzle, as you saw in Rob's presentation as well, the house in the back. Not just any old house. We call it the Haven or the Artist's Haven. So on East Street, five generations of the same family, Austin's here tonight, you might hear from him in a little bit, owned the properties on East Street. There were, was it seven or eight? Seven houses maybe?
Around seven, yeah.
Yeah, so seven houses. Earliest one over on East Street was from 1884. There's others from the late 1800s and then some from the early to mid 1900s. There, those houses are all gone now. And all gone except for this one, sorry. We saved this one. And so five generations of the same Lewisville family own these properties. And actually Laura, who was the last owner of the property, just sent me this today. This is Uncle John and he lived in the Haven first when it was over there. And then, is this your grandma? Is that what you're saying? This is Grandma. Oh, which is wild. And this is taken over on East Street. So first it was Uncle John's. I just learned that today. But after that, and the reason we named it the Artist's Haven or the Haven for short, is because this guy, as well as a guy named Fred Hoffman, but the guy on the left is Chuck Sarasso. And he used to live in the Haven. He did art classes out of the Haven. And if you look at here, there's the grain elevator right there. So it was painted white. This is like in the late 80s, early 90s maybe. Yeah, Caleb, take a picture. This is wild. So there, he's doing an art class. And so they're all painting the scene with the field and the grain elevator and all that. And I got in touch with Chuck. He still lives in Lafayette. He's, of course, got a little bit older, but the idea working with Chuck is he's gonna, we're gonna commission him to do a piece similar to that, of that field, which he had painted many, many times and hang it up in the Haven, in the living room, to honor his memory and his history there. So this is, you know, a picture of the Haven while we were in the process of saving it. This is a whole huge story in and of itself. And I won't get into it tonight because it's already nine o'clock on the dot. But after months and months of work, a neighbor's huge help, lots of help otherwise, on a cold December day, we saved the Haven. We saved that 1926 house. And that's the house that we want to put in the back to create this East Gateway to Lewisville. The mansion, the Haven, the Steinbach car, the Lewisville caboose, and this whole entryway coming into Lewisville. So and if there's one thing I've learned in doing all this, or maybe in life in general, so often it's the little things. Mailboxes, an old newspaper, I had a mailbox thing I was gonna bring. I didn't. Old newspapers, a railroad, it's like a piece of wood, a whistle, a doorknob. But it's really the memories that are tied with those things. Kind of become the everything. It's what binds us together as people and our community. So this is my oldest son, Tate. I've got four kids and this is Tate. And I'm just gonna read this. So some afternoon, 50, 60 years from now, when I'm long gone, I imagine one of my kids will hopefully stop by the corner out there with their family. They'll look at that 175-year-old train at that point, 150-year-old houses. And I imagine my son talking to his kids, maybe. I remember digging that caboose out with my dad. I remember how everyone joined in. The day we craned it out, there were so many people there. I remember Dad somehow put the caboose in the Christmas parade one year. I don't know if you guys remember that. It went down Main Street. And we all rolled down Main Street in it, this 45,000 pound caboose, Christmas lights, music playing, and seeing everybody's faces light up with awe and wonder when they saw us rolling by. I remember the day we placed it there. Dad let me hold the guide rope, this giant caboose in the air above me. Even though I was a kid, I could move this massive thing with just a tug. That small house, it's the mansion. I remember when we discovered this, these 80-year-old newspapers sandwiched in the floorboards. And the house back there, the Haven, I remember helping Dad put these massive steel beams and wheels under it. He told me I could lift an entire house with one hand and he put my hand on the jack and let me do it. I remember him sitting in the driver's seat of a 50-year-old semi in the dead of winter, pulling that house out. I remember. Maybe one of my kids on their nightstand will have a relic, a memory from all this that ties them to their past. Maybe something that reminds them that with hard work, you can do anything. Or perhaps just reminds them of being shoulder to shoulder with their dad. I don't think it's very often, I'm landing the plane. I know this is getting late. I don't think it's very often that someone comes along with a unique vision to save and savor our community's history in the way we're trying to do, and then rolls up their sleeves to try to do it. We've collected all these things, the caboose and a boxcar and railroad tracks, a miner's mansion and an artist's haven, mining carts and whiskey barrels and all sorts of historic pieces, and we've worked hard to make it happen. Now, sitting down with Andy Johnson, the DAJ, the other day, he sort of sat back for a second and he said, Travis, you're not, you're not just saving history here, you're creating it. And maybe we are. Maybe this is or could be some Lewisville history in the making. And the work, so much of the work is done. But we're at a crossroads now, not tonight in particular, but if and when this comes before you for approval, of do we continue to tell the story? Can we continue to tell the story? And I'm just gonna go through the vision, much of which you've seen from Rob's presentation, and then we'll be done. So as Rob showed, this is the full color version, right? But here are renderings of what we hope to do there. Mansion, party in the front, business in the back, live-work scenario. And to be clear, we, I don't actually have a preference, whether it's CC or MUR or anything else. Whatever is the, is a path that might be workable. It seems like keeping it, retaining community to commercial might be the most workable path. If so, that's great. But yeah, so here's more, you know, showing the idea. And with, with, you know, as you guys noted, sort of extremely oddball shape of the site, it seems that there, unless, it seems like there are extremely limited options. The options are, you know, build, try to build a three-story thing with a million waivers. Try to do something like this with a million waivers. But the options are very limited because of the size and shape of the site in general, which is obvious. But there's this ditch easement to the north, which further exacerbates kind of the difficulties. You guys asked about the MUR property right there. I don't actually know. Looks like it cuts two properties in half. I don't really know the story there. I should have asked more, Rob, sorry, but let me share more. But this was a different concept way early on. If we were able to buy the property next door, which we're not, but could be cool as part of kind of a bigger thing at some point. Just wanted to show that. We talked about this, what works, you know, for the MUR zoning district. Lots and lots of waivers would be required if we were to retain that, still do live-work. There's details there, you know, ground floor facades and all this stuff. But this is where Andy would be much better than me. I'm like, yeah, stuff. But so the ask, and nothing tonight, except for feedback, input, that sort of thing, questions, of course, as a concept plan meeting. But can we allow CC zoning district to be a map amendment to retain that? This is probably for later down the line, except land dedication in lieu of the ditch easement and fee, allow historic preservation to supersede zoning requirements, and live-work use by right. So, you know, we've done our best to kind of save and savor our history. And the crossroads is do we continue to tell the story? It's not really up to us anymore. It's gonna be up, up to you all and working with steady staff and everybody that we can to see what we might be able to do. I think that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council or comments? Yes, council member.
So I do have a comment. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your incredible energy. I mean, like, it was better than Netflix, I'll tell you that, for the last hour. I, I, as somebody who, and I was thinking about this as I was sitting here watching you do this. As somebody who lost all of my tangible memories in the Marshall Fire, I lived in my home for 30 years, my whole adult life. Anything I had from a parent or a grandparent is gone forever. And I can't thank you enough for going to this much work and finding those things, blowing that whistle. Like it gave me goosebumps and made me so happy. I'm an eight-year-old girl again. I'm a train and plane person, so I loved it. So I just, I thought you should just understand how much I appreciate it. But I want you to know too, I hear from so many residents, they love seeing that caboose and the new car on the property. It just makes everybody happy and lets them know they're in Lewisville. So I really appreciate all of the love, and it's clear that you have that, for Lewisville and the work you've done to help us preserve Lewisville's history, our home. Thank you. I love that you grabbed a house from East Street because those would be tragic losses, right? To not be, have, have us have some of this. And I hope there's a way in the preservation of the home in the front with the historical preservation, there's something to do with the caboose and the rail car as well so that it can't be taken away. So it's part of our community forever. Just a huge thank you from me. And I just keep up the good work. That's it.
That means more than you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember, tickets.
Yeah, so yeah, thanks to the presentation and Rob, thanks for all the backstory too around the whole, the whole area. I mean, it's obviously a really interesting lot. It's a weird lot. I actually considered buying it whenever it was for sale, six, seven, eight years ago, for Fox Property Management, to maybe build an office building there for my company. You think about like, which would have been cooler for the city of Lewisville? My office for what you've done with it. So sometimes it's good to lose. But it's, 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 it's a really interesting process because you haven't really come to this body through all of this process, right? And, you know, putting the tracks in there, putting the trains in there, buying the house, maybe. And so now you're finally here for a piece because I think, you know, you're getting to a point where like, this may not be used by right anymore. I may not be able to just do the things I want to do. I'm gonna have to get some special permissions from, from council. And so that's hard because again, in this, in this setting, you know, there's, there are no promises for, you know, what, what comes next or what, what we'll do. But I definitely think what's, you know, interesting is you're sort of creating, if you will, a museum there with, with, as you call the mansion, the Haven and our train cars. It turns out both of them kind of being our train cars and one way, one, one way or another. And even the tracks, like having the tracks in the ground that, that used to be there. So it, it has become this little sort of, what do you call the boxy, treasure box? But we keep memories, you know? There's a better word for it. Anyway, that's what it is. Anyways, it's very, 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 very cool. And so, yeah, I mean, I think, I think all of us were kind of struggling on the onset of just like, what's the, what do you actually need? Why go CC? Why, if it's used by, or not used by, if it's possible and either. So now I'm starting to understand a little bit more of the complexities of why it might be harder one way or the other. And then, you know, for us, what's, what's more palatable? You know, if, if generally like, oh yeah, this is something that we're in support of generally speaking. You know, is it messier to like spot zone one place? Or is it messier to have a bunch of, allowing a bunch of exceptions to, to another use? It's, it's complicated, right? And so I think, you know, I will lend my voice that I'm in support generally of the concept of the, the East Street House being there and having this be what we call like a mullet, you know, business up front, party in the back. Development and that I think that And that I think that makes sense, and a three-story residential building, higher density, might be nice in this area. But I think as an alternative, you know, I, I guess I would say, you own the house. If you wanted to come back for a landmark for that one house and that's it. We're going to say, well, no, we want a commercial building there. Like, you probably have a really good chance of, of doing that. And if that is done, well, now what, what can we do with a lot anyway? And so, whoa, we could do this. So it's kind of like stacking these things in order of what, what makes it easier. But generally speaking, I'm, I'm in support of it. It'd be really interesting to see what path you end up taking, what path staff thinks is the simplest path to get back to us in a way where we actually can give you an answer. But I think the point of these new, to us still, I've been on for six years, and this is maybe our third concept plan review, is it's a little weird to give, you know, this advice. But, you know, generally, I think this is a great project. Generally, I'm in support of it. Generally, I'd like to figure out how to get you to the finish line. And so how that comes back, I don't know. But, but yeah, I, I think it's a great project.
Thank you, Caleb.
Thanks. Other comments? Councilmember Vee.
I just want to echo what's already been said. I think this is a wonderful project, and I really thank you for all the work you've put into it. I'm particularly interested in the historic preservation portion of it. And if you do preserve that, the mansion, you might get some financial assistance that will help with the project. But I think this is great, and just do whatever is the easiest way to get the project done. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Appreciate it.
Other comments? Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you for the presentation tonight and your passion and dedication for the history, preserving the history of our community. You know, just focusing on the actual structures and land use that we're talking about tonight. When I look at the mixed-use designation that, you know, was, was proposed before, in all honesty, I'm not certain if that would be where we would land today. If we had the same conversation, we may or we may not. And my whole point in saying that is I'm not wed to the idea that it has to be mixed use in that particular area. You know, especially with this one piece of land that's the entryway to our town. I couldn't be happier that Caleb lost that opportunity to you, because I like your vision much more. And what a treat to enter the town and immediately see that history there. So in general, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of this idea, the direction you're headed, the preservation. You're working with a great architect who's done a lot in this town to preserve our history. And I'm, I'm particularly interested in this underground passageway idea. So I look forward to more, more updates on this creative use of a very unique but very important piece of land within our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooperman.
I'll start off with a question following up on Councilmember Hamilton. So about the, the underground connection, so like, is that? I'm just kind of wondering how that came to be the plan? Like, is it part of making it into the live-work, that it's necessary to do that, or just curious?
Yeah, so my understanding is that we couldn't have it be two completely separate independent structures, and so they needed to be connected in some way. With the lockup of the site, literally connecting them didn't really make too much sense. And with the oddball shape of the property and parking and turnarounds needed and that sort of thing, it seemed like, and you guys can speak into this too, it seemed like that was perhaps the best way to enable, you know, the, the haven, the mansion and the whole site, is to connect and be an underground corridor. Both structures need a foundation. I mean, the mansion definitely needs a foundation. The other one obviously needs a foundation. And so we're like, well, they both need new foundations anyway. If we found out a way to fit into the live-work scenario by connecting them, so it's technically one structure with this underground corridor, and sort of killed multiple birds on stone, sorry for the reference, then that can make it work. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I mean, I would second what my fellow councilmembers have said. You know, just to sort of emphasize against like that Councilmember Hamilton was saying, I mean, I, you know, I feel like, you know, it could be quite nice to have sort of a soft beginning to maybe what becomes more, you know, taller mixed use as you come into town from the east. So that sort of allays some of my concerns about spot zoning in this particular parcel, like, just one thing I wanted to add, I guess.
Thank you.
I have a couple other questions. I have a question about the, the, it looked like patio or the sunken part, the sort of underground. And I don't know, you've got a picture, one of the renderings there.
Yeah, let's see.
For some, I'm thinking if you have kids nearby, that that's like an invited nuisance, but the kids jump over there.
I got lots of kids nearby all the time.
The living space, you may have more kids than you want down there besides the four of your own. Or whoever, you know, is, is in there. Tell, tell us a little bit about that piece. Because that wasn't sort of necessarily intuitive about the design. I thought it was an interesting thing, but I.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, so to be candid, or is this one, sorry, I can't do two things at once. We sort of started with like, oh, if, this is way early on, if this could be possible, wow, that could, you know, make a really cool, like, kind of multi-level patio space with tables and chairs and that sort of thing. But when it became apparent, that's, that was not in the cards. We still thought that same sort of lockup for, you know, even just having it, you know, live-work could just work really well. It's got, you know, multiple levels. It makes more usable space, above, below. Kind of ties in the whole site together. The person who helped put this together, like, did a, a view from different points and likes, you know, the view standing down in there, you still see the train cars, which is kind of cool. But it's got this, and then the train cars are kind of tall, right? So there's, there's this multi-level kind of facets to it, which we just kind of really liked. So we ended up keeping this whole sunken patio thing.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I mean, it looks really cool, that part of it. I, I guess I'm, you know, I, I suppose they're, I'm concerned, I suppose, a little bit about the safety of it. But that's something to be worked out in the fullness of time. I do like the fact that it's on a smaller scale than the original, or the, the idea of putting it into the next lot, too. I think this is, it, it's a, it's a better, better scale. I probably have less concern at this stage about the, the spot zoning, as Councilmember Cooperman said. I, I do, I wanted to probe something with Rob, their director, about the other homes. You, you had talked about the fact that one of the ways of dealing with spot zoning, I think, is to make, basically, make the rest of the, the houses have the same, along that place, to have the same zoning as what they're asking for here.
I mean, I think that's an option, but it's not necessary. I think it's more of a policy question for council is, you know, I think if council has a different vision for this strip of land, I think we might want to consider whether, you know, we don't want to go through this five more times, right? So I think if, and we could deal with this through the comprehensive plan process, too, as well. For example, to try to create a new vision for it. But so, again, I think if, like, we'll work, we'll work with the property owner here, you know, on the best path forward, considering the feedback, you know, that we're receiving tonight to get to the next stage, so you can fully consider everything. But, you know, I, I think we'll have to consider whether the CC zoning, which was our initial reaction, is more appropriate. Because if you actually look at the zoning standards for CC, it's much more supportive of what they want to do. Like, the mixed-use residential just, it's so, like, it doesn't even resemble mixed-use residential zoning at all. So I think that's just a future policy question for council, is if you want to change the whole strip or just change this one, and then try to maintain the policy for the rest. But we could talk about that through the comprehensive plan as well.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. I think that is a discussion that's probably a bit more complicated. I think for this parcel, I, it is a very unusual parcel. So I, I do appreciate all the, the work that you've put into this and a lot of sweat and blood, sweat and tears of you, your family and a lot of people. And I was a part of that one picture, or at least I was there. I may not have been part of that one picture or not. There were so many people there, and I appreciate the community spirit. And I think you've managed to get the, the coal cart kind of. Somebody got the coal cart to be in a better shape than it was when it was.
Oh, that's, that's on the corner there? I got wheels for it. We're ready to, ready to put it in action.
Good, all good. I'm appreciative of that. And, you know, some of the ship has sailed with the, the boxcar. So I think what you've done with the back part of this is, seems like a really cool thing. I think a lot of people really enjoy that. So this is the kind of thing we do at, at this phase with the sketch plan process. And, and hopefully it gives you a little bit of, an idea of, you know, some ideas to, to think about. And it sounds like you're, you're off and running. Is there anything else from council we can tell them right now? Say more? Doesn't sound like it. Thank you, Travis.
You guys, I appreciate it.
And thanks for, thanks for your patience.
Yeah, of course.
You did as better, if not better than Andy would have done. Good job.
I'm not sure.
But, you know.
All right. Thanks again. If you have any questions, if you have any questions.
I don't. Thank you all for your time. I know it's late. I really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Very good. All right. Next matter is ordinance number nineteen hundred, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance pending title thirteen of Lewisville Municipal Code concerning water and sewer connections. Tap fees first reading to set the public hearing. And I know that we need any disclosures right now, but do we have a staff report? Looks like it.
Just, just a brief presentation, council. This is a follow-up from the May twentieth. Go ahead.
All right. We got to get council calm down now.
I have nothing exciting or as interesting.
We're, we're now paying attention to you.
Yeah, it's okay. It's all right. He's more interesting. This is a follow-up to the May twentieth city council meeting, where tap fees were discussed for water tap fees and a small amount for wastewater tap fees for ADUs and consideration of changes to our ordinance to support the affordable housing and ADUs in the city for various uses, whether that's multi-generational family living or renting or what may come of people that build ADUs. So the follow-up that we did for the ordinance is to set the water tap fees for zero for ADUs. We felt that through our analysis, that the ADUs would be a small impact on the water usage comparable to offsets that the ADUs could offer, replacing turf with a structure that people may live within. And so that was kind of the basis of our recommendation around that. Also, there is levers we can pull in the future if ADUs become popular. And then there is a demand there that we did not predict of being more stringent with water conservation and backing off on outdoor irrigation. As far as wastewater tap fees, we are not recommending any changes to our tap fee structure for wastewater for ADUs. So ADUs in the past, we had considered them as a multifamily unit. And through previous analysis and cost of service analysis, we determined that indoor use, whether it's an apartment or a townhome or whatnot, is roughly eighty percent of what a single-family home is. And so in this ordinance, we're just clarifying that an ADU has been included in that language and is being charged at eighty percent of a full sewer tap fee. And then lastly, we have clarified that an ADU can be serviced through the primary structures, water and sewer service, and requires that for the most part. But it does leave some openings so that we can make some professional decisions if we happen to get to a site that might not follow or conform to some standard installation. So that's the gist of what we have tonight. It really just sums up and changes the ordinance for previous conversations we've talked about. So I can pause there and answer questions that may come up through this process for you or things that maybe I did not touch on.
Questions? Yes.
Actually, at this one, I don't think I have any questions. I just wanted to thank you. I know you put a lot of time into this whole topic and have made some adjustments and have really been creative in looking through the whole thing and flexible. And I just appreciate your, your work and professionalism and everything you've brought to the. It's, it's a long conversation that we've been having on this, and so I'm excited for this to come back for, for a second reading. But I, I understand what's in here and why it's in here and don't really have too many specific questions, so thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for, yeah, Councilmember Cooperman?
So when we previously discussed the water tap fees, you presented a very extensive analysis. And I'm just wondering, have you attempted to do anything similar, looking specifically at the wastewater, the sewer fees? Or, or not, not so much? Just, you know, to get a sense for, I guess, like, you know, you know, how much wastewater is coming from different single-family homes? You know, like, how much variation is there in the wastewater across, you know, different occupancies, things like that?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, this is the, the part where this conversation gets fuzzy, right? We can debate how many people will live in a home, or how many people might live in an ADU, or how often, what are the occupancy rates? And so we, as utility, have to think about a worst case. So on the water side, we can, in the future, back off of irrigation from nice blue or green grass, bluegrass. But on wastewater side, people are people. And so if, as we go through our, our generations of usage and, and things change, we have to plan for the worst case. So the average person is going to use what the average person uses. You're going to shower, you're going to cook, you're going to use the toilet. So we believe in a per capita, per person usage. And so we think, over the worst case, as maybe things gentrify in Lewisville, and then there's new families, those new families want to rent out ADUs, you can maximize population. Where right now, maybe there's less population, and it's, maybe it's some kids coming back. But over time, that could also expand out and maximize. We just can't predict that. But we don't have a way to back off wastewater. Once wastewater is coming, we have to service it. We know from recent conversations as a fund that small costs can create big percentage increases to the bills. Ultimately, ADUs are growth, and so properties that are putting in ADUs are introducing that growth. And so either you either charge the people that are introducing that growth, or that cost is averaged out of, out of all the customers, and you just say that cost is absorbed. So we felt like we were able to do that with minimal impact to anybody, if, if not no impact to anybody on the water side. But wastewater, over the long term, every little bit of usage we add, will have some impact. We know that. So back to the analysis, roughly ten years ago, we did a pretty detailed analysis of studio apartments, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and then townhomes and that versus a single-family home. And that's how we got to that eighty percent rate. And through the analysis that we did most recently, we didn't think our ratios changed significantly. If anything, we were able to validate stuff we had done many years ago. We did see water conservation happen over time, both outdoor and indoor uses. But that ratio still is relative to the water saving. So we think the eighty percent is still valid, and the costs we have for the wastewater tap fee are the costs that we predict that we need to charge for taps to cover costs.
Okay. And just one little follow-up, like, I mean, so there are ways to, to reduce, right, wastewater, like, by having low-flow showerheads and other things like that, which presumably we, right, we, I assume we have some sorts of codes around what is required to be put in, but, so we, we could make progress. but, so we could make progress in that, in that direction, I would guess. But maybe, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the, going up to the bigger picture, in roughly 2014 Colorado as a state, passed the water sense bills, so that everybody, like Home Depot loads, they have to sell the water sense fixture, the water conservation fixture. So just overall, from the vendor and who sells it standpoint, you can't buy the water-wasting stuff in Colorado. So that is that long-term conservation trend we've seen. Furthermore, like, once we sell these taps, we don't have a way to police anything. We don't want to go into people's houses and police anything. If you've ever bought, like, a new build, anyone that's building a new build, and you got the lowest common denominator showerhead, probably the first thing that people do, I know I've bought a new house in the last several years, is I go to Home Depot and find the one that's got, you know, feels the best to me. So I just think there's some realities here. We're getting into weeds where we just don't control it, nor that we want to, and the state has controlled that overall.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Do you have a question?
Yep.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Can you, Kurt, can you please remind us, you know, as far as from Rob's team is concerned with ADUs, there's a time period by which existing structures can be brought into code for an ADU. Is there, can you remind me, is there a difference for what we're talking about tonight with tap and sewer fees specifically, with those that are folded into this process in that time period, existing structures are brought to code, or versus new structures that will have these tap fees applied? Does the pulling into code existing structures include not charging the sewer tap fee, or they still get charged?
No, we're intending to charge the sewer fee, presuming they haven't already paid some type of fee for something like a guest house. So there could be some exceptions, but if they've paid no additional fees, then that would be due.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kern.
That's Kern. Thank you. Just really quick question. It's more of a point of clarification for public or anybody who would go back to watch this. I saw in here about the water tap fees, we're not going to be charging additional ones. It mentions five plumbing points, so that would be, it's not based on like the chart where we normally use when we're talking new construction, instead it's like a sink, a toilet, another sink, a shower, and maybe a washing machine?
This is not applied to ADUs.
Okay, at all. None of that does.
It still applies to other separate structures that are not an ADU.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, or existing structures that are not an ADU.
Yes.
Do we need to take public comment, or can I make a motion?
First reading.
Great. I'd move that we approve ordinance 1900, series 2025, and set a public meeting for the second reading, with the date being?
August 5th.
August 5th.
A second.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thank you. Last item on the regular agenda tonight is Resolution Number 50, series 2025, a resolution authorizing the purchase of sodium hypochlorite generator emergency repair parts. And that is like one, two, three, four, five, six nouns in a row.
Well, evening, council and mayor. I'm Greg Manette. I'm your utility superintendent in the Public Works Department. In front of you is authorization to purchase emergency repair parts for those sodium hypochlorite generators at both the Sid Copeland and Howard Berry Drinking Water Treatment Plants. For background on this, these generators are used to make disinfectant on-site for treating water. Staff, part of regular operations and maintenance, discovered some advanced corrosion on the reaction cells, which are really like the heart of those generators, which meant they were into premature failure. Because summer demands were kicking up, they jumped into action, worked with vendors to procure these parts. So this purchase covers those parts. Because they exceed the line item of the budget and the operating expense, this is requiring a budget amendment. It will be covered by the reserves in the water fund, and this is why it's in front of you. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
Greg, you said your name is?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you, Greg, and thank you for coming tonight. I don't think we've ever had you present to us before.
No, yeah, first time.
That's it. My question was confirming his name.
Thank you for not being intimidating to him. Yes, Councilmember Dickinson.
It's so rare that we're having what I would call true core service conversations. Drinking water is incredibly important, and I appreciate you guys for the work that you do to have, you know, the best drinking water in the world, really. I mean, it's pretty remarkable what we have in Colorado and Louisville, and thanks for watching out for all of us and making sure it all gets done well. And obviously, this needs to be done, and we got the money to do it, and I'm in total support.
Do you have any public comment? Okay. We have a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution Number 50, series 2025, a resolution authorizing the purchase of sodium hypochlorite generator emergency repair parts. Second.
Comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for keeping our drinking water clean.
All right, city attorneys, report.
No report from me.
Identification of any future agenda items tonight. All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?